I will now call to order the Withfull Town Council meeting Tuesday, May 28, 2024 at 5:00 p.m., held in the Municipal Building at 150 East Monroe Street in Withfull. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge allegiance led by Councilman Gary Gilman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of this evening's agenda. And I think the agenda is going to be amended.
Mayor Taylor, there is no substantive change in the closed session matter, so pleasure council.
So is council okay if we take the closed session off of the agenda before we vote on it? That's what. All right, so I will need a motion to amend the agenda to remove the closed meeting session that was initially on here. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Okay.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Right, this be roll call vote. We'll start with Councilwoman Candace Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Kilman, aye.
All right, that motion passes. Just for, at 6:00, we do have scheduled recess if this is necessary. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 13, 2024. I need a motion to accept as presented or somehow amended.
Stand by.
I have a motion to accept as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I hear none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Next on this evening's agenda is a public hearing to consider a community development block grant application for the Monroe Street Housing Production Project. And, thank you, Elaine.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. On your agenda, it does say that Brian Reed would give a presentation, and he may show up at some point during the meeting tonight, but I would like to just give a quick overview of the CDBG application. As you recall, we have discussed this several times, beginning last summer. Open Door Community approached town staff about the possibility of applying for a community development block grant to assist with the funding of the proposed Monroe North Apartments. And as you recall, this project seeks to develop 32 affordable rent apartments on West Monroe Street. So essentially, where we've been is at the November 13 Town Council meeting, I provided a presentation about this, and the Town Council scheduled a public input meeting for December the 5th. We did have a public input meeting on December the 5th, and we did not receive any public input that was in opposition to the project. At the last meeting on May the 13th, the Town Council received a staff report, again, regarding the CDBG application, and you agreed to host the public hearing scheduled for tonight. The grant application is due on June the 12th, and Matt Rogers PDC in partnership with Open Door Community will do most of the heavy lifting in preparing that application. Once it is prepared, the town will submit it on the DHCD portal. The purpose of the CDBG grant will be to obtain funds for civil engineering and the site work needed prior to building construction. At each of your stations, I provided the preliminary engineering report, and if you turn to page eight, you will see that the estimated cost for that preliminary engineering work is If the grant is awarded, there is no cash match required of the town. So essentially, the town's role in this is to serve as a pass through for the funds. So after this presentation tonight, you will have the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, you will consider a resolution to support the CDBG application. Okay. Do you have any questions? Okay, if you have any later, please let me know. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will now open up this public hearing to receive comments regarding the Monroe Street Housing Production Project. And I did not see anybody that signed up that wanted to speak to the public hearing. Do you see? Is there anybody out there that wanted to speak to the public hearing? All right, so if nobody is in-house that wants to speak to the public hearing to receive the comments regarding the Monroe Street Housing Production Project, then I will now close this public hearing. Moving forward, consideration by Town Council to approve a resolution supporting the Monroe Street Housing Production Project. So I will need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for consideration by the Town Council to approve a resolution supporting the Monroe Street Housing Production Project.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Right here, none. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
All right, let's have it. No opposed, so congratulations for that going forward. Next on the agenda is ordinance number 1433, the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024 to '25 on third and final reading. Town manager, Mr. Freeman, will...
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. As we get this set up here... First, a round of thank yous again to Mr. Mike Stevens, Town Treasurer, who is always instrumental in assisting me with answering any questions I have relative to the budget, the budget preparation every year, and has done so graciously throughout this process this year. I also want to thank Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Patterson, who served on the Budget and Finance Committee this year, and met numerous, numerous times to work through the difficult task of helping us as staff prepare a budget. I also want to thank my assistant town manager, Elaine Holden, who, after every one of those meetings, helped me bulldog every question that came out of those meetings to help me get prepared for the subsequent meetings. And to that end, thank you very much, Elaine. And also, thank you to the council for now enduring. I think this will be the fifth meeting on the budget and hopefully the last, which is the third reading, and then the appropriations, which is essentially the authorization to proceed on the approved budget. First thing I'd like to highlight are, well, I'll basically go through an introduction of the budgeting process and what the outlook is for the town, and then we'll start into the expenditures by function to illustrate to the audience and to the council where the town's money goes. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 lays out the town of Withfull's financial plan for providing the high-quality services that our residents, businesses, and visitors have come to expect. The proposed budget includes cautious revenue projections along with modest operational increases to prepare for the financial year ahead. The proposed budget includes the strategic use of reserves for needed capital expenditures in lieu of borrowing, as well as the use of reserves as a temporary budget stabilization measure for what is anticipated to be a budget shortfall. Like other local governments, the town continues to contend with high inflation and general market unpredictability. Following inflation rates higher than 7% in calendar year 2022, the average 12-month inflation rate for our area was 3.2% in 2023, according to the Consumer Price Index, which is tracked and published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. This continues to impact the cost of construction, equipment replacement, and facilities maintenance, processed chemicals, and nearly all operating costs across the board. Personnel is the number-one component of our budget if you're able to boil it down to personnel, operations, and capital. Personnel is by far our largest expenditure. The cost of attracting and retaining employees in the current labor market continues to rise steadily. And to that end, the proposed budget provides for 3% cost-of-living adjustment for all employees, along with a 1% year-end holiday bonus. That is, and I've made this clear every time, but I want to keep emphasizing this, we don't give a 1% bonus based on your salary. We compute approximately 1% of payroll and then give a flat bonus at year-end for that. Before and during the pandemic, we experienced an especially difficult time hiring and retaining police, fire, and EMS personnel. This is part of a national trend in which first responders left these professions in droves. I'm pleased to report to the council and to our audience that the market-adjusted salary increases last year. After that, after the market-adjusted salary increases, we are now at near-full employment with public safety and appear much better positioned to retain our highly competent staff in these areas. That said, we know we must continue to provide advanced training and growth opportunities. The proposed budget includes the addition of about $70,000 for career development opportunities in these fields. We must continue to provide a compelling reason for these critical employees to choose Withfull as more and more localities compete for a dwindling pool of employees, and I think this helps us with that. This budget also includes the addition of a full-time narcotics investigator. I feel strongly that it is important to our community that we dedicate resources to combating the distribution of narcotics that are not only deadly but can erode the fabric of the community in many other ways. The budget includes the creation of one new full-time position of the Senior Museum Educator. This is a program that has operated on part-time staffing for many years, but the search for a part-time replacement has not been successful. The town continues to remain competitive with fringe benefits, and this year is no different. In April, the Town Council voted unanimously to renew the employer-offered insurance plan with the local choice with a 10.5% premium increase. The increase is adding an estimated $150,000 to the '24-'25 budget. Regarding capital, the town's capital improvements plan for '24-'25 includes about $782,000 in new one-time expenditures, as well as carryovers for ongoing projects. Highlighted within the general fund are the purchase of two new police vehicles at a total cost of $105,000, the replacement of the auto shop roof at $105,000, renovations to McWayne Pool totaling $110,000, as well as the removal of the Withers Park bleachers at an estimated cost of $32,000. Within the wastewater fund, there are included $450,000 in carryovers for the rebuild of pump station six, which has failed several times over the last 18 to 24 months, as well as a $2 million sewer INI project that includes $1.5 million in grant funding. The water fund includes $250,000 in water main improvements on Wesley Highway, as well as $20,000 for the replacement of failed hydrants and the purchase of a new utility truck for $60,000. Carryover projects include the lots gap tank project at $1.55 million. And to reiterate, this is a $6, $6.5 million project in partnership with With County that also includes over $3 million in grant funding. That project has $2.5 million from the Department of Housing and Community Development and another $1.3 million from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. Next, we'll take a look at expenditures by function, and in the slides I'll go over here are fully audited figures, so you'll see that the last year reported on here was '22-'23, which is our last fully audited year, and these go all the way back to 2011, 2012. Public safety is the town's number one, excuse me, the second-highest expenditure by function and the highest within the general fund. So to be clear, the water and sewer funds combined are our biggest expenditures by function, but within the general fund itself, our highest expenditure is public safety. Now, that may be a little nebulous, but the second-highest expenditure by function overall and the highest within the general fund is public safety, which includes police, fire, and emergency medical services, along with animal control and the building official's office. Public safety has experienced a significant growth over the last five years with the transition to full-time paid fire and EMS staffing, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Consider, for example, that between 2011 and 2017, the town of Withfull spent an average of $3,136,900 for public safety. In 2018, that amount increased to $3,835,000, or about $700,000 more than the average of the six prior years. This marks the beginning of the transition to a full-time paid fire department. In fiscal year 2020-21, the number increased significantly to $6,700,000, $6,700,405. Much of the increase was attributed to the transition to full-time paid emergency medical services and the eventual creation of the combined Withfull Fire and EMS Department, with about 30 full-time dual-trained fire and EMS personnel. In '21, this also included the infusion of CARES Act funds that were provided by the federal government and utilized to renovate the fire and EMS building, provide sleeping quarters for those personnel, and to provide some hazardous duty bonuses that were limited to only public safety personnel. The subsequent year expenditures came down significantly, and this denotes basically that the CARES funds were expended. Also, there was a tremendous amount of vacancy savings in that year as the COVID pandemic really, really put a strain on particularly all public safety sectors, but EMS personnel were being pulled into hospitals, emergency rooms, urgent cares, and those sorts of things. So it was another competitive disadvantage, I would say, for us was the pandemic itself. At one point in time, the town was down six of the 28 uniform positions within the police department and as many as four or five within the fire and EMS department. These are professions that have been in shortage nationally, too many leaving the profession altogether. We are fortunately back to full staffing in both departments. While some communities are defunding their public safety departments, the town of Withfull is headed in the opposite direction, and I can speak with confidence in saying that we have personnel sincerely dedicated to protecting the community and saving lives around the clock. This function made up about $6.28 million or 23% of all expenditures in the '22-'23 budget, and will make up about $6.87 million in the '24-'25 budget year. Public Works until recently was the second-highest expenditure by function across all funds, but was surpassed in recent years by public safety. Public Works is, however, the second-largest expenditure by function within the general fund, and we are once again projected to spend over $5.1 million in this category. Public Works includes about 50 full-time and a few part-time employees who play a critical role in the day-to-day service delivery being provided by the town. Public Works includes paving, sidewalk, and street maintenance, right-of-way mowing and maintenance, snow and ice removal, brush collection and disposal, maintenance of three cemeteries, including West End, East End, and Oakwood, where they provide all the mowing, maintenance, and burial services in those locations. This also includes solid waste collection and disposal, also known as refuse or garbage collection and disposal, sign installation and maintenance, traffic signal maintenance, buildings and grounds maintenance for all town properties, as well as custodial work in all of the town's many buildings. Let's talk about revenues. These are also based on fully audited revenues. One way in which the town pays for its many services it offers is through general property taxes. General property taxes consist primarily of real estate, personal property, machine and tools, public service tax, penalty and interest, and mobile home taxes, which make up much smaller shares. General property taxes make up only 10.4% of the total revenues needed to operate the town's general fund for fiscal year '24-'25. Real estate makes up the largest portion of this category, that is currently projected at $1,898,000 for the upcoming cycle, or about 8% of the general fund revenue. All combined, general property taxes make up $2,480,000, or about 12% of all projected general fund revenue for the upcoming budget season. Local taxes are a very important part of the town's annual revenue stream. These taxes make up about 44% of the proposed budget for '24-'25. This projection does not include any tax increases except for, excuse me, except for the lodging tax, which was raised a couple months ago. Amongst these taxes are the state sales tax, the B-pole tax, the lodging tax, and the Meals taxes are taxes on foods prepared for human consumption primarily by restaurants. The tax does not apply to foods sold through vending machines or other foods sold in grocery or convenience stores that are not prepared. Meals tax makes up the single-largest revenue stream for the town of Withfull, making up about 19% of all general fund revenue. Lodging tax or transient occupancy tax is a tax charged on room or lodging rentals provided to individuals who stay fewer than 30 consecutive days. These taxes are paid by the guest and collected by the lodging establishment for monthly remittance to the locality. Lodging taxes have historically been a vital revenue stream for the town of Withfull. The town's situation at the intersection of Interstate I-81 and I-77, along with favorable topography and low overall tax rate, combined to make Withfull a very attractive location for the development of lodging establishment. Lodging taxes projected at the current, excuse me, lodging taxes make up about 8.3% of the general fund revenue stream, and combined, the meals and lodging tax makes up about 27% of all revenues. Categorical aid is given to the localities by the state in the form of grants to target specific programs and must be spent for those narrowly-defined purposes. By and large, most of Withfull's categorical aid comes in the form of VDOT maintenance funds, which total about $3.5 million annually. You'll recall that up through last year, that was about $2.8 million, and then there was an increase this year to 3.5. Public Works makes up, recall that Public Works makes up about $5.4 million of the general fund expenditures, and 65% of the Public Works budget comes from the $3.5 million from VDOT. These funds are based on the number of lane miles of roadway maintained by the town. Other highlights of this budget revenue category include grants from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the design of the Heritage Walk Museum Connector, an annual grant of about $205,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for law enforcement, $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs to support Withfull Fire Department, and $50,000 from the Virginia Tourism Commission for marketing programs. Categorical aid is one of the largest portions of the town's revenue stream and makes up about 16% of the general fund budget for the '24-'25 budget cycle. Interest on reserves, interest on reserves is the interest that the town earns on monies in interest-bearing savings accounts. We currently are earning daily interest rates of about 5.5%, and we contrast that with the average borrowing rate on outstanding debt at 2.79%. The community center debt, for example, matures in 2035 and has an interest rate of 2.24%. I highlight that because there is a lot of outstanding debt out there on these large capital expenditures, and we've heard complaints, arguments, or questions about whether or not the town should refinance debt, but I'm telling you, right now is not the time to do that. If we ever drop before 2.24%, we will try to pay down that debt, but while we're earning 5.5%, it's very advantageous for the town to continue to carry that debt at 2.24. As we all know, the Federal Reserve's raised interest rates in an effort to combat inflation. Higher interest rates theoretically increase the cost of capital, not theoretically, but truly increase the cost of capital, which discourages spending and encourages savings, thereby slowing the economy and bringing inflationary costs back down. High costs have been detrimental to nearly every consumer, including the town, but we've tried to take advantage of the higher interest rates while we can. This cannot, however, be counted upon long term. The Federal Reserve is targeting a core inflation rate of about 2%, and we're still at above 3.8. We still were in March. Contrast that with one year ago at this time when the core inflation was still at Core inflation measures the change of the price of goods and services excluding energy and food sectors, because these are just too volatile and fluctuate too wildly for them to be included. Core inflation utilizes both the CPI and the PCE, which removes some of the other costs for energy and other things like that. Interest on reserves is not a huge part of the town's budget, but it is expected to provide a significant revenue this year. Last year, we budgeted $565,000, and we're now projecting over $700,000 in interest on reserves for the coming year. That is my presentation for this evening. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions if you have any. Ultimately, the budget on the screen is what the council will consider for approval and appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Freeman? For us to still.
Thank you.
Any questions? Just letting you know.
Now, consideration by Town Council to approve ordinance number 1433, the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024-25 on third and final reading. I need a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number 1433, which is the budget ordinance for fiscal year '24 through '25 on third and final reading.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. This is a roll call vote. We'll start with Councilwoman Johnson, please.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Kilman, aye.
Nice habit. Thank you very much. Going forward, we need to consider the appointment of a member of the Withfull Tree Advisory Committee to fill a vacant position, whose terms expire from May 14, 2028. Ms. Gordon, did you have anything to add to that? So I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the appointment of a member to the Withfull Tree Advisory Committee to fill a vacant position. Mr. Hunter Stewart.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? So the ayes have it, and so congratulations to Mr. Hunter Stewart, Tree Advisory Committee. Next on our agenda is our presentations to Town Council. And this evening, the first presentation of the Town Withfull Tree, the Withfull Tree Walk brochure by Chairwoman Alma Watson of the Withfull Tree Advisory Committee. Brian, will you grab those brochures and just pass them around while she's...
First of all, let me say how pleased I am to be here tonight on behalf of the Tree Committee. We have been diligent in our efforts to present this first brochure. We see it as the first of many that we hope that will be in the offing in the future. I think to go back just for a bit to the origination of this, we certainly would stop to give credit for David Rockert, who's been on the committee for some time, as well as With Mars. Those gentlemen are due to go off the committee soon, and it's one reason you welcomed a new individual to work with us. The bounty of trees here in Withfull speaks for itself. This particular edition, the first edition of the Tree Committee, I would call your attention to the centerfold. We've attempted to position the trees that we currently had nominated around the edge of the brochure and have symboled them with the map. We see this as a wonderful way to invite people to walk along the street. You may notice that Withers Road ended up with the most, which I guess we're not surprised. And part of that has to do with the fact that having, I guess, some challenge in getting people to nominate trees is that some of our Tree Committee members went out and helped to do these initial nominations. But we hope that in the future that we'll have many more citizen nominations to offer up, and we could see several different walks coming out of this particular effort. One of our members has donated an initial $50 for us to be able to produce the brochure, and our hope would be that we can unveil it there in Chicago, and we're looking at maybe the first day of summer, June 20, and perhaps June 21, to offer walks for people who might, we might gather up from the festival and... and, and take on the designated walk. On the back, you will see that we also have a small number of trees that have been nominated from the community college. That would be more of a self-directed walk, I suppose, at this time, unless we had a couple of people who would be able to take, take some folks out there. Particularly wanting to thank, and we have two members of the committee here with us tonight, Jim Howie is on the committee, as well as Tamara Lowry, and all of the members really were very instrumental in us being able to tie down information that we wanted to preview on here. And we are particularly interested in whether or not, with technology being what it is, that we might be able to, in the future, add QR codes so that individuals could find their own way with regard to either walking or driving along the route. We are pleased that Withfield has a number of older trees. The locust tree that we have featured on here is number two is certainly one that we can lay claim to, because it not only is regarded as being wonderful in this community, but it was in a state competition to be a state tree at one point and was duly recognized for that. Not only are we looking at some of the finer, older trees, but we have a sampling that we, that thanks to, Mr. Morris was designated number one. It's a small live oak that we wanted to feature because of the history behind it. The state of Texas actually gave it to With County in honor of Stephen Austin, who was born here in With County. I won't try to describe all of them to you, but we say with pride that we hope we can publish this. We hope to do about two hundred copies to get us launched for the, for the walk that we would be initiating at Chicago. And I would also finally point out the fact that we're a part of the Tree City USA, which we featured on the back, and that is commendable for a town our size. Are there any questions?
Good job, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. And next on the agenda is another presentation. This presentation is by Mr. Oscar Montgomery regarding a youth art project. Mr. Montgomery is one of two youth community ambassadors that are associated with downtown Withfield. Welcome.
So yeah, so I am one of the youth ambassadors for Downtown Withfield, Inc., Tossi Kapranos. She's the other one. She wasn't able to make it tonight, but she helped me put this presentation together. And so we had, with Todd and with the fire chief, we had put together an idea for kind of brightening up Main Street. And so the idea was, we were going to paint as many of the fire hydrants as we can, and so to start, the plan is to do two. And so kind of the idea is, is we paint either a design or a colorful thing that kind of represents the town, and so we've been reaching out to different students, because it's supposed to be a youth project, so we wanted to involve the students as much as possible. So we've been reaching out, getting some ideas and some different designs back for them, and then we're going to pick through those. And so these were just a couple of examples that we had liked. And so why we wanted to do it. So a lot of the communities around here, I don't know if you go to Abingdon or Blacksburg, they've got the wolves in Abingdon and the hokey bird statues, and so we kind of, that's a very expensive project to undertake, and so we kind of, we've got a thousand dollar budget that we've gathered for this. And so we wanted to do something similar that could kind of brighten up the downtown and kind of represent Withfield, so we're thinking that we can be the hydrant town. And so that was our kind of idea behind it, was to do something to kind of help brighten up Main Street. And so obviously, like I had said, the plan is to involve as many of the students as possible that are willing to help and that have great ideas for it in the idea. So we've been reaching out to some people that our art teacher, Aaron Simons, has kind of put us in touch with to get ideas and everything for the painting. And so when we want to get it done, our goal has changed from early May to, we're looking at, we're going to try and get it to where we can present it at the Fourth of July Festival. That's our goal at the moment, is to have them ready for that. And then these are all the dots up here. They're kind of hard to see, but those are where all the hydrants are. And so another one that we had looked at possibly doing was over by the farmer's market. And so all the ones on Main Street are highlighted there, though. And so we were planning on doing, oh, well. There we go. So there's one right in front of downtown Withfield that we were hoping to do, right next to the Heritage Walk, and then there's another one down along the Heritage Walk by the farmer's market we were thinking of. So that's kind of the idea behind it. And then materials, this is all, we had presented this to our board as well, so this is kind of just the basics for our board, was just the materials we would need. So we're going to obviously have to have paint and everything, and then just the amount that we would need. But we just kind of wanted to give you all a look into it and let you know what's going on, so.
I think it's awesome. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Absolutely.
Who's brain, who brainstormed that?
So we kind of sat down, we knew we wanted to do a project, and we knew what our budget was, so we sat down. It was Tossi Kapranos, Todd, Charlie, and I all sat down and discussed it and came up with this idea. And Todd had had mentioned that the fire chief had mentioned the idea possibly, so we thought it was a great idea, and we're rolling with it, so that's the plan.
Good job.
Good job.
I agree with that. Thank you. Real quick question, is that okay? Just didn't know if, I know that you talked about doing like six, and you had the motive for that, say, for instance, throughout the town. Was there any discussion about if someone, like a family member may want to sponsor, if they want to like pick a section of town or whatever like that, was anything? I mean, do you know?
So we hadn't really thought of that yet, but that would definitely be something that we could consider in the future. Absolutely. Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you.
What a, what a feat. Thank you. Did awesome. All right, next on the agenda is citizens' period. We do have several people that have signed up, so I will call them in order that they are signed, and I will remind everybody, come up to the podium, state your name and your address for the minutes, and there's three minute, as far as that we can let you go today. So first one is Mr. David Johnston.
Mayor Hill. If I don't mind, I like to call her, our, our chief.
You want to do what? I'm sorry?
You, our, our chief, here with me. Once again, we're on this right of way. It's not a right of way. VDOT has looked into it. Now it's under the hands of the Bureau of Land Management or the Department of Defense, because we, I've got bald eagles on a property. That's fault under federal government, and that is a borderline fence, the fact it runs against eighty-one. And Brian, you caught Chris Peoples on this, Chris later referred Richmond, and Richmond called me back on it. And we got a major drug problem in Withfield, major. I mean, Brian, talk about adding extra people in the force. I can assure you, it's extra people in town now, because the federal government's involved in it. And if you will notice, the last few weeks or the last couple of months, there has been a whole lot of black and white SUVs, black and white pickup trucks. They're all from Northern Virginia, around the DC and Annapolis, Maryland up there. But what I'd like to talk, I talked to our chief, fire chief this afternoon, by that being a borderline property fence, and Bureau of Land Management is working, looking into it. If it's not put back up, if a town makes sure that they don't put it back up, that makes the town a co-conspirator to it, and a accessory to after the fact. And all that's fault under federal government, and I would hate to see the state of Virginia lose their charter ship, or town of Withfield. Like I said, that hillside where I'm at, who's got a major drug problem, our elderly people can't even get outside and breathe. And there, half them are on oxygen now, they can't even leave their house. We got pet animals that can't even go outside unless they get sick. And I think Chief Hatch can speak, follow me up on this. I know what I'm talking about, because I've worked outside of the deal for years. If I can smell it, you know, or other residents of our hills, it's this funky smell. It's something major going on. I mean, I know marijuana, everything's legal right now, but it's more than marijuana going on. It's been, I must say, somebody's cooking meth up there, too.
I will remind you, your three minutes is up. I think council appreciates you bringing that information to us.
But our fire chief, I said, we don't have any fire, uh, dancer there. Only just block up that hole, right of way section.
Mr. Johnson, sir, there are a lot of people that would like their opportunity. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is Mr. Matt Phoebe. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the minutes, please, sir.
Matthew Edward Phoebe, five eighty North Eighth Street, Withfield. I'm here speaking on behalf of Virginia Organizing, the Withfield Chapter, With County Chapter, and this first part is, we'd like to address the council and say, with spring in the air and summer approaching, it's easy for many of us to forget about the freezing temperatures of winter. Members of the Virginia Organizing With County Chapter and Open Door Community continue to keep winter in their minds, and how With County's unhoused population will struggle to find shelter. But thanks to the Withfield Town Council, the task of sheltering the homeless from the coldest nights of the year will be a bit less stressful for the open door community this winter. For more than a year, Virginia Organizing, With County Chapter, has advocated for the town of Withfield to support open door community and funding for a warming shelter. After chapter members wrote letters to the editor of the Enterprise, met with town council members, spoke during public comment periods, and held a rally bringing attention to the unhoused situation in our town, you, the members of the With County, or the Withfield Town Council, voted unanimously to allocate ten thousand dollars to the town's budget, of the town's budget to the open door community warming shelter program. The efforts of open door community and Virginia Organizing, With County Chapter, are the result of years of asking people in our community what they need. Virginia Organizing With County would like to thank the Withfield Town Council members for the time and effort they put in to make Withfield a bit safer for the homeless during a bitter, the bitter cold nights of winter. As more funding will now be available to assist open door community's mission to shelter one of our nation's most vulnerable populations, we hope this address conveys just how much you are all truly appreciated. How much time I got?
A minute and a half.
Okay. I'd like to say on top of that, the warming shelter is a great first step. I know Andy Kegley has advocated for a full shelter for many years, and we haven't had one since Crossroad Shelter shut down, I don't know, a couple of decades ago. I know I was eighteen when I did a homeless shelter benefit concert, and I'm much older than that now, so it's been a while. A lot of the struggles he's had, the obstacles were nimby's or not in my backyard, and I get that, because I think the efforts of the Town Council and the downtown Withfield, the way they've changed Main Street is excellent. I really commend you guys on that, and I get that location imbalance is important. Andy did consider putting it out in the county somewhere, but some people said that having people without driver's license isolated, that would be cruel, but I think there might be a third path, if that ever happens, where we could shuttle a couple of times a day, once in the morning, once in the afternoon, something like that, so that they won't be cut off, a van or something, you know. All right, that's my three.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is Ms. Melissa McWhither, McWhith, sorry.
I am Melissa McWhiter, three forty East Washington Street. And so according to Town Ordinances, Section nine, one, one, zero, at certain levels, noise can be detrimental to the health, welfare, safety, and quality of life of the inhabitants of the town. Under this ordinance, you regulate dogs, cats, and other creatures, such as a dog may not make utterances for more than thirty consecutive or non-consecutive minutes from seven AM until ten PM. So if my math is correct, your dog or cat can bark or catterwalk legally for two minutes per hour during those hours. Per Town Ordinances, we are allowed to keep six hens, but no roosters because of noise. If said hen or rooster were to squawk for at least one minute out of ten consecutive minutes, you're in violation. Most folks, if they're going to have a get-together, they do so on Saturdays, birthday parties, cookouts, wakes, whatever you do as families. And if a neighbor dog barks, or saints preserve us, if a cat meows, we could conceivably call the authorities, and the neighbor could be fined for an animal doing as an animal does. This seems pretty silly to me. We are not allowed to have a rooster at all because it's crowing. Again, a creature doing as a creature does might annoy a neighbor. That being said, on the past three Saturdays, a commercial entity with commercial mowers, blowers, and weed trimmers spent time as follows. Four hours and thirteen minutes mowing two city blocks adjacent to our home on May eleventh. May eighteenth, they were rained out at three hours and twenty-three minutes. May twenty-fifth, six hours and forty-two minutes of nonstop mowing with two industrial mowers, one of which is quite ill, and makes twice as much noise as the other, and it's not neighbors or homeowners mowing. This is a commercial business. These hours on every single Saturday in May are not only affecting our lives, but potentially the lives of approximately thirty residents directly adjacent to or encompassed in this area of mowing. We were working outdoors, as we always do when the weather allows, and it was pretty much torture. We could not listen to music, we could not hear each other speaking, but if I read the ordinances correctly, this is perfectly within the legal rights of the commercial operation. We also routinely hear mowing when we awake at seven AM, plenty of motorcycles, trucks, the cars revving and zooming, but what is our approach to noise? Like, so I feel like the whole policy needs to be revisited if the town does actually care about the health, welfare, safety, and quality of life for its inhabitants. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we can, probably all say, we'll definitely take a look at the ordinance and kind of look at it again and look through it. So next on the agenda is Mr. McWhither.
Hi, I'm Bob McWhiter, three forty East Washington Street. I love birds. We love birds, so we like to listen to birds, and we like to know what birds are around us, and so we participate in this citizen science project out of Cornell University called Birdnet. And what it does is it uses like listening devices, microphones from like your security cameras, if you put a USB mic out there, to listen to the birds, analyze it with artificial intelligence, and then categorize the birds, and this goes to science so that they know like the migratory patterns, what birds are where, when. And so I just wanted to play related to Saturdays. This is what we heard. Saturday, we've seen the birds. Saturday, listening to birds. Saturday, listening to birds.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Patel, I do believe you wanted to speak, is that correct? Okay, you're next on the agenda. If you'd please state your name and your address for the minutes, please, sir.
Hello, my name's CJ Patel, Comfort Inn, 315 Holston Road. I had met with Brian and Elaine last week on those two topics we talked about. Mr. Woods called me today, so I talked to him about the plans for VDOT for Nice Circle, and that he explained to me what was going on, and I'll check the plans with him. But I would still be more interested in finding about the lights, what we talked about. So he said he was going to get back to me on that topic. Holston Road, Brian had explained to me that it's going to go to the right, to the right, so I know about that. But still, there's no light there, so we, and I think John had said something today that one is, I think it's out or something, because me and you looked at it that day as well. So, yeah.
I think that TV is...
So I think Mr. Hash and them were looking at it, I don't know, but...
They had just worried about it, and then the master service guy.
Right. So we're still waiting on that, or?
It's still out.
Yeah, it's been about a month and a half or something since we last started all this.
Service request.
Okay, all right. And then we talked about the shrubbery and stuff, and I had talked to Brian about Lithia Road, which you know about that, as you're going up Cracker Barrel, and if you look towards the foreland right there, you can't see anything. So same thing again, does that belong to the town of Withville, or does VDOT get involved with that, or?
That is off.
Same, yeah.
I do believe we've got it.
I wasn't cut today, I don't think. Maybe I didn't look at it right.
From the sign.
You've turned on all the signs that exist.
Yep.
From the sign.
Yeah, but as you turn there, and you're going up towards Lithia, all of that, where you come parallel to the interstate?
Correct, and we do have a meeting scheduled with VDOT Limited Access Personnel to discuss that area.
Okay.
Essentially, as we explained to you, our town public works only maintains those right-of-way areas under town maintenance.
Right.
The areas that are under VDOT's limited access control, it's usually maintained by their interstate division, and that they belong to VDOT. So our hands are somewhat tied, because we have to be very careful what we do on limited access property that belongs to VDOT.
But don't you think that's, that's the problem, like, like the town's got to go talk to, talk to the electric company, we got to do vice versa. And before you know it, I'm not going to come to these meetings and things will stay the same, so things got to continue, and I'm going to, I'm going to continue.
We have actively been working on your service.
Right, no, no, yes, yeah.
We will keep you updated.
Right, because it is a problem, and it's just continuing, yeah, so.
We're hoping to help.
All right, so, again, what is the timeframe? You just say whatnot, or?
I think you hit on it.
I think you hit on a few of those things. So Dr. Woods called you today, he's happy to go over exit 41 plans, which are VDOT projects we have no control over.
Right.
We're going to get access to those plans and show you what they're, we'll pull out the lighting sheets and show you what they plan for there. I think that'll inform a lot of the conversation moving forward as to whether we need to request more lights, whether we get them or not, or whether we, we certainly can't be putting in new lights within a construction demolition zone where they're physically removing them at present. So I think we need to get a little more information about what they're planning to do with those intersections, sit down with you, point it all out. And then like Elaine said, she has a meeting on Wednesday with VDOT's limited access representative, I think at 1:00 p.m., or 1:00, 1:30 on Wednesday. The service requests, the AEP, for the streetlights have gone in, but it's not something, we can't physically go up the pole and change a light bulb because we don't own the poles. I mean, we simply pay, just like any other user does, I mean, we pay an electric bill and that's it.
Okay. And then the one last thing was about the median that we talked about, like all the signage there is all covered up too, still, on 7781 where TA is, going towards Hampton, Ramada, Comfort Street.
Right, so...
And that belongs to both, I guess, as well.
If it's the little concrete median, some of that, so what happened is, is the horticulture team, our right-of-way group went out, they mowed it, they're going to spray it, but they only spray under certain conditions, there can be no wind, no rain projected for 24 hours. I mean, they're very meticulous about that because they don't want to overspray, they don't want to kill other people's weeds, we don't want to pollute waterways, so they have not sprayed it, but they did go out and cut them, but it's just growing really fast.
Very fast, yeah.
But that is absolutely, the intention is to get it sprayed, they're just doing it under the perfect conditions to do so, because it's for the safety, for safety reasons.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I have one more, Mr. Brian Reed, do you want to come up and talk to council?
Yes, Mrs. Mayor, and I'm sorry for being late. I was conducting one of block grant public hearings for the town of Marion, and there were some concerned citizens that showed up that I could not get away from. Just wanted to let you know that the PDC is preparing the block grant application for the Monroe Street housing project. You have an agenda, I believe, in your packet, I mean, a resolution in your packet to pass, so we will be able to submit that grant application. It's up to $2 million right now, according to the PER, the project, just for, again, just for the site development, is going to be around $1.9 million. So we will use every penny of the grant if it's awarded to the town.
And the council did consider and approve the resolution.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I apologize for being late.
Out of my control.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, thank you for coming. There's nobody else signed up to speak to council this evening, so we will move forward. Next would be council member time.
Mayor Taylor, did we, are there the new business?
You go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
I think we're on number 11, new business.
I think we finally scooted off all of that, didn't we?
It's okay.
There's just one item that I wanted to bring to your attention for new business, and it's a plaque that the town has received from the Run for the Wall 2020, excuse me, Run for the Wall 34, 2024, from the Board of Directors and Riders of Run for the Wall. It says, Run for the Wall 34th Annual Run, presented to the town of Withville, and grateful appreciation for the support shown to the Southern. I just wanted to present all of this plaque, I'll add it to the wall, council boardroom, I'll pass it around to everyone. That's it.
Apologize for skipping over that, is there any other new business?
Not at this time.
All right. Next would be reports, a town clerk, Sherri Corbin.
I only have one. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Withville Town Council is on Monday, June 10th at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers.
All right. Next on the agenda is to schedule a public hearing to consider the request of the Virginia Department of Transportation for the town to donate a small parcel of property located at the intersection of Main Street and 12th Street. We do have a staff report on that, Mr. Billy Anderson.
Hi, good to see you guys. VDOT getting ready to design a project here near the intersection of Wesley Highway and Monroe Street, which are near the intersection of, or Food City, basically. Through their research and their field work, they've determined that there's a portion of former rightway at 12th Street that was originally shown on Piper map, 1839, the extension of North 12th Street between West Main and West North Street originally. The same rightway portion is also shown in the Boyd map in the late 1870s, it's the same location. The lots that HOPE currently has were former AEP lots, the title stems back to original lots, also again from the Piper map. AEP originally conducted surveys on their properties, which determined where their limits of their title extended to, again, through VDOT's process of doing their right-of-way research, their field work, they basically have determined that there is a remaining portion of that original 12th Street that was not consumed in a road, a set of road plans, it was, it was discussed in, I think, the late 30s, early 40s, VDOT came through and widened a section of Wesley Highway. They're requesting the town to donate or deed of quitclaim, they prefer a deed of donation, it's a little cleaner, it makes their title agency feel a bit better. Originally, there was a council action when the plans were presented to the town council to review, the council, per the minutes, agreed and basically approved the design, set of plans, and they also indicated that they would release into VDOT the portions of anything the town, the rightway that the town may have had within the right-of-way shown on the plans at. I think that, I think it was, the intent was to maybe donate the property to them, but it was specified it was internal to what VDOT was showing on the plans at, so that excluded this little strip, little small piece. The VDOT right-of-way division for Sherri's, Sherri had a question earlier today, they're supposed to get me a estimated area, how large the parcel is, I think it's going to be in the, in the realm of maybe 1,000 square feet, it's going to be fairly small, and it's basically just a remnant left over from where VDOT acquired right-of-way to improve a road corridor, and from what the town originally had for right-of-way of 12th Street. It's going to be the same thing, that currently there's a sidewalk that extends in this property, the sidewalk will remain there, the town will remain to maintain the sidewalks or anything that's in it, it'll just be a portion of what would be Wesley Highway's corridor instead of a portion of what was, like I said, 12th Street right-of-way. At the time, and of course, the Piper map and the Boyd map, it was dislisted as a macadamized road, or a slightly improved road, you know, this wasn't designated as the highway at that point.
If I may, Mayor Taylor.
And excuse me, Billy, what the council needs to do tonight is set a public hearing, because if we do a deed of dedication or deed of donation for this land, we would essentially be dispensing with property, and the Code of Virginia requires the council to conduct a real, a public hearing before giving away anything. And at that hearing, we'll provide some more information and some visual aids. You all may remember that this project was part of the Monroe Street realignment project that VDOT was doing, it was one of the safety projects that VDOT is funding 100% to realign Monroe Street, that, that and the project on North 4th Street are the two highest incident areas for, for traffic incidents with property damage or injury, personal injury in all of Withville. So that's what this is associated with, correct?
Yes.
So all we need to do tonight is set a public hearing.
So at this point, like council to consider to schedule a public hearing for the June 24, 2024 Town Council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, seconds, or any further discussion? Here, none, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, and that motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. Next is a review of the ordinance, number 1434, an ordinance to repeal Chapter 10, Planning and Development, Article 4, Erosion and Sediment Control, and to remove Article 5, Impervious Land Area Stormwater Management of the Code of the Town of Withville, Virginia. And Assistant Town Manager Holton will update us on that, please.
All right, so the good news is, is that no action is needed tonight. Tonight is just the first meeting where I am presenting the issue, and there'll be a future action by the town council on this matter. So in your packets, I presented a brief staff report about erosion and sediment control and the relationship to the town ordinance. If you haven't had a chance to read it prior to tonight, that's okay, you can read it prior to the next meeting. Essentially, what I tried to do here was lay out what erosion and sediment control law was, what stormwater management law is, and as you all know, we do have a section in Chapter 10 of the town code that is our erosion and sediment control ordinance. In essence, the town approved this back in the 70s, and it's lived in the town code ever since then with periodic improvements to that town code section as the state laws have changed throughout the years. The reason why we're bringing this before you tonight is that at the state level, the state has come up with a new model erosion and sediment control ordinance, and because of that, they're asking all localities to update our erosion and sediment control regulations by July 1. So that's essentially why you're seeing that tonight. And talking with town staff, one of the things that we would like for you to consider is the possibility of repealing the erosion and sediment control out of the town code, so that it no longer lives in the town code. The reason for that is we think it might be better for the development community if the erosion and sediment control was a standalone ordinance. So what that means is that the law will still be in effect, it will still be in ordinance, but it would more closely match with where we are going with zoning and subdivision regulations. As many of you know, the Planning Commission has been working with the Planning Department on a rewrite of both our zoning and subdivision regulations, we are calling this the Unified Development Ordinance. It is a, it will be a standalone ordinance because it is 350 odd pages at this point in time. So if the erosion and sediment control ordinance is a standalone ordinance, it can mirror up with that and be easily referenced by the development community. A lot of times, developers and people who are in the business of building subdivisions, neighborhoods, grading, they're, they're not accustomed to looking in the town code for those sorts of things, and so that's what staff would recommend. But again, no action is needed tonight, just think about that, and if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, just give me a call, we can talk about it, and then at the next town council meeting, I will also put an item on the agenda so that I can answer any questions and we can talk about it a little bit more. Thank you for your time.
Next on the agenda would be, if I'm wrong again, council member time. Would you like to start? Sure. I have nothing at this time. Just advocates.
Write this down, I have nothing at this time. I did speak to Mr., well, write it down, write that down. I did speak to Mr. Freeman about an issue, and we're going to...
We'll take care of it.
We're going to take care of that, but nothing at this time.
I'm going to have, go just say a little something. So I want to reach out and say thank you to Rosalie Jude and her staff for, once again, doing a bang-up job for the Run for the Wall, for this community, and for the school, and they always do such a good work, and Mother Nature sort of was a little bit rocky there, but once again, it was a success. Also want to say thank you to the Wall of Honor Committee. We do have one member that sits on that committee, and they had a lot of dialogue, and they redid the veteran ceremony, and they had it in Withers Park, like at 7:00 in the evening, and it was the best program that I had seen in a long time, and I just, they knocked it out of the park, and so I think they might be considering to do it again. And, and we had probably, what do you think, Colleen, 150, 200 people?
Possibly.
And they were not, and they were not Run for the Wall bikers. These were our citizens that came to that. And unfortunately, there was a lot of people who didn't know that we were switching it over, so I think it went, you know, for next time, we'll get it talked up about.
But it was advertised.
Oh, no, no, yeah, it was, it was, it was, but we all know how that goes. It was, so I want to say thank you to that committee.
Thank you, yes, they did, and they did an awesome job, yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you, yes, they did, and they did an awesome job, yes, yes, ma'am.
I don't have anything at this time.
All right. So last call. No rights.
I have rights to reserve. Sorry. He better be our jerk.